Good evening and welcome to the August 28th Regular City Council Meeting for the City of Bella Vista. There are some handouts over by the door on the table. I was distributing earlier, but I think some of you have come in after I stopped doing that. There's financial statements and also some updates on where we are and various projects that may be of interest to you. We're going to start with the invocation with Pastor Brenda Weidman of the First United Methodist Church, Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll move into the roll call. So will you please stand?
I invite you to pray with me. Creator God, we are so thankful for this beautiful day, for the wonderful moderate temperatures and the lower humidity. As we look toward fall, we look toward the crisp mornings and the beautiful blue skies that come with that. Gracious God, we ask for your blessings upon our brothers and sisters who are down in Texas and Louisiana and at this point are having just a terrible time with weather. The disaster, the flooding, all that they are going through, the displacement of home from homes. Lord, we ask for you to appoint those to be your hands and your feet, to watch over them during this difficult time. Lord, we ask tonight for you to be with those who will deliberate on behalf of all the residents of Bella Vista, that you will give them wisdom and guidance, that you will help them to make decisions in good stewardship of this wonderful place to live, and that they will make decisions that will be for the betterment of the community. Lord, we pray all this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor.
We call the roll of council. Councilmember Lloyd?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Wozniak?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Councilmember Barr is excused.
Thank you. Citizens input, we don't have any this evening, so we'll move forward. First order of business then is the approval of the minutes 1st July 24th. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie?
And then we had a special meeting on October the 21st. Those minutes, sorry, August the 21st, a little ahead of myself. Are there any errors or omissions, sir?
I had just one comment on those. In the last full paragraph, the last couple lines, it says John Flynn asked how many firefighters we now have in place. Then it says he stated, it should say Chief Sims stated that there are 51 at present.
Correct.
That's all I had.
All righty, thank you. Anything else?
Recommend approval as amended.
Thank you.
Second. All right. Fowler, Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Obstain.
I wasn't here.
Okay. Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to the monthly financial report for July. I apologize that it only came out today. We didn't get the sales tax figures until late in the day on Friday. Are there any questions at all? I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
You don't need to take a motion.
Oh, sorry. That's true. Okay, moving to the next one. A motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Excuse me. Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. The first is an ordinance accepting and confirming an easement dedicated to the public on parcel 16-43406-000 located parallel and adjacent to the rights of way for Dartmoor Road and Blowing Springs Road and for other purposes, as we discussed in the work session. This is our portion of Phase 1 of the extension of the Razorback Greenway from the tip of Lake Bella Vista. This is in the parcel of handouts for those of you that has it. It shows where this will be. If you look at the green line that starts just to the left of the Wall of Honor and goes down to the creek, cuts across to Lightning Lane, and then it goes up to Dartmoor, that's where we take it over. The rest is Bentonville. And so our portion is a tiny portion that's beside the Wall of Honor and then from Lightning Lane and the Hawk Crossing that we'll talk about in a few minutes, all the way down to roughly the first parking lot in Blowing Springs. I'm hoping that they're going to start building that soon. I believe there was one last easement that they had to get on the Bentonville side and then they were good to go. So this easement, sorry, this ordinance confirms the easement for our portion of it, and it also states that we will take over the maintenance for this, which for the first year is $0, because there's a zero warranty from the folks who install it. And then the estimated annual maintenance cost according to Trailblazers will be $1,000 a year. Is there any discussion at all? Okay. Staff is requesting that we move to third and final reading. Therefore, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
No. That's out of order.
To third and final reading?
Yeah. You moved to approve it.
To third and final reading.
To move to third, okay.
Second.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. Third and final reading, accepting and confirming an easement dedicated to the public on parcel 14-43406-000 located parallel and adjacent to the rights of way for Dartmoor Road and Blowing Springs Road and for other purposes. Is there any discussion? And I would request a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public on several parcels of real property for the back 40 trail system and for other purposes. As we explained at the work session, excuse me, when you build a trail, it looks good on paper, but once you actually get out there, the trail may not necessarily go where you think it was originally going to go. And so there had been some changes, and so we were working with some of the homeowners in the area who very graciously agreed that we would get easements on their property. It's in your package. And so that's what this is all about. Is there any questions at all? Staff is here.
I don't have any questions. I would just like to say thank you to the five people or couples that allow us to do this. It's a really big deal, because it's such a big addition to Bella Vista and it's been tremendous for us. So thank you to those people.
I agree. Thank you. Okay. Staff is also requesting that this be moved to third and final reading. May I have a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. Third and final reading, accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public on several parcels of real property for the back 40 trail system and for other purposes. Is there any discussion? May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. The next ordinance is accepting and confirming easements and rights of way dedicated to the public and authorizing the purchase of easements on several tracks of real property along Lower Suits Us Drive and for other purposes. Again, as we discussed at the work session, we are in the process of paving from Highway 71, Lower Suits Us, which connects with Cedar Crest all the way up to Cumberland.
Cunningham.
Cunningham, sorry. I knew that was wrong. The Cedar Crest stretch is actually, for the most part, covered by a state grant of 250,000. If you've been up there, they've already put the base rock down, and the next step is to build a four-foot-wide concrete ditch that Chris, I think is about 800 feet long, according to Mike.
Yeah.
And then it's going to connect with Lower Suits Us, which is going to be concrete, and it too has to be widened, and we need grading easements. So there are 28 or 26 lots that actually touch that portion.
Where's 20?
28 lots. So we had to go to each lot owner and seek their approval to either have a donated easement or we would pay for that piece of property, which is very small. And so this is accepting and confirming those easements and rights of way from those folks who were good enough to either sell or to donate. There are some that have not, and we're going to talk about that a little later, but this is pertaining to those who have graciously agreed to the easements. Staff is also requesting that this be moved to third and final reading. Is there any discussion before we have that motion?
No. Just once again, thank you to those people. You know, it's outstanding. It's going to be a great improvement in Bella Vista, so thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Third and final reading, accepting and confirming easements and rights of way dedicated to the public and authorizing the purchase of easements on several tracks of real property along Lower Suits Us Drive and for other purposes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay.
All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. The next ordinance is accepting and confirming easements and rights of way dedicated to the public on parcels 16-77998-002 and 16-77998-003 on Trafalgar Road and for other purposes. Most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the Blue Mountain Storage Area on Trafalgar, where the Stump Dump used to be, which is now closed. The front half of the old Stump Dump was never used as a Stump Dump. It was used as an entry area, and that's where they got the earth to push it over onto the Stump Dump. So it's good, solid land. We're proposing to purchase this from Cooper. Council has already approved that purchase, but we need to have the lot split to be able to do it. And the reason for having it is to build a salt and sand storage, similar to the one that we built last year out near the new streets building. It'll have an asphalt floor, concrete stem walls that I think is six feet high, Chris? Yeah. And it's covered. And in the middle of a snowstorm, the last thing we need are all the trucks that are working on the east side to go all the way to the west side to be able to get the salt and sand. It's much better if it's local. And this particular parcel is also well away from all the housing, so that when the fellows are working late at night with the very annoying beep 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 backup light sound, that hopefully you won't hear it. So that's the purpose of this ordinance, is to get that easement, excuse me, is to get that easement and right-of-way dedicated to the public on these two parcels. Is there any discussion at all? Okay. Staff is requesting that this be moved to third and final reading. Therefore, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. Third and final reading, accepting and confirming easements and rights of way dedicated to the public on parcel 16-77998-002 and 16-77998-003 on Trafalgar Road and for other purposes. Is there any discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. The next ordinance, waiving the requirement of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a cost-sharing agreement with the Bella Vista Village Property Owners Association, Inc., related to a floodplain study of Little Sugar Creek and its tributaries, and mending the 2017 budget and for other purposes. The reason that we're doing this, which is not quite the same as the POA, is that we have very, very old floodplain maps that really need to be updated. This study is a good start towards that, but also we're talking to the Corps of Engineers as Phase 2 to this, to have a much more comprehensive study done so that it incorporates many of the watersheds that actually feed into Lake Bella Vista. So this is Phase 1, and the money that we will spend as our portion of this, the Corps has agreed to accept as our down payment or portion of the study that will be done by them. I think I've got that right, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Right. And so that's the reason for putting this in front of the council this evening. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
The amount that was mentioned in the POA meeting was 20,000. How did that miraculously become 72,000?
It's always been. It's always been 72. Can't speak to the POA, don't know.
I think you may have an order of magnitude there. The POA's portion of overall contract was nearly 200,000. It is my understanding that Mr. Jetson, the representative project board, asked for the full funding amount from the board in case the city did not cost share.
Yes, yes, they did, but they also mentioned that the city was going to vote on paying 20,000. So that's why I wasn't sure where this other number came from.
I don't know where that came from.
But it's like a proposed five-phase study, right? And we're just participating in Phase 2 of it?
Well, we're in...
Phase 1 was a Lockloman Dam coming down Gordon Hollow Creek, right? And we had an option of participating or not participating. And then the one from Lake Bella Vista Dam on down is the one that we're participating in.
That's right. It's Phase 2 to them, but it's Phase 1 for us, because then we're going to go off to the Corps of Engineers.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question. Yes, ma'am.
And I do have an additional question. What's delineated here is Task 1, which was also said that it would be optional for the city. I'm concerned that part of that work would be done on property that is not within the city and is actually owned by the POA, and I, why should we be paying for that?
Chris?
The Task 1 portion of the contract has been eliminated with our cost-share agreement with the POA. We are only concentrating on the Little Sugar Creek corridor for this particular contract cost-share agreement.
Where does it say that on here?
I think it's spelled out, like I said, in Phase 2, as I read through, and that's what, that's $144,000, and that's the portion that we're splitting with the POA.
My only question is if I vote for this, am I not, I want to make sure I'm not voting for Task 1.
We are not engaging Task 1. That, as you might see in the scope of work, is delineated as a city task. To be honest with you, we are scraping together funds to provide for this project, and we could not afford the additional funds for Task 1.
Thank you.
Any other questions, sir?
I didn't completely follow the part about this is our down payment, and the Corps of Engineers is going to pay the rest. Is there a certain percentage we have to pay? How does that work with the Corps of Engineers?
This will be in-kind, Chris?
What we're asking you all as a council to do is approve this as a one-to-one cost share. We have been negotiating a scope of work with the Corps of Engineers for a broader study of the entire watershed for Little Sugar Creek. And so they have a grant program called Planning Assistance to States. That is a 50-50 cost-share arrangement. Our portion of that can be in-kind services, so what we are attempting to do with this particular contract agreement with the POA is to leverage our portion of that, the 72,000 that we're looking at, into not only the portion of the project that the POA would fund, so doubling our money essentially, but we're also looking to leverage all of that money into an agreement with the Corps of Engineers.
So the Corps of Engineers would pay it. If it's 50-50, they'd pay another 72,000?
It may even be 144 if we swing our numbers just right.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, 144.
It's a good deal.
Yeah.
Anything else? Good questions? Seeing none, staff is also requesting that this be moved to third and final reading. So I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Excuse me. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Third and final reading, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a cost-sharing agreement with the Bella Vista Village Property Owners Association, Inc., related to a flood study of Little Sugar Creek and its tributaries, amending the 2017 city budget and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Wozniak?
With major reservations, yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. Now we move on to the resolutions. The first is approving appointments to the Bella Vista Arts Council. You may remember, we started an arts council that was approved by council over about 18 months ago, and unfortunately, it just didn't quite get off the ground. So the chairman said that it might be best if we appointed a new chairman, and Dave Barfield stepped forward and said that he would do it. And Dave, I think you have your other members with you?
Right. Jeff Denell, Crystal Big, and Terry Wilson.
The infamous Terry Wilson. All right. Did you put the pieces of paper on everybody's desk?
One each of you has, it's some work we've done in the last couple of months. We have a proposed mission, vision, and goal statement that we'd like you to look at. If you have any thoughts or critique, any questions or concerns, please keep them to yourself.
Thank you, Dave. Always stated so eloquently.
The second page is a summary of a conference that Mayor Fisk, he asked me to go to last month, summarizing the economic impact from 2015 on the northwest Arkansas area. It's kind of eye-opening, so you might want to take a quick look at that to see how the arts benefit us, not just culturally, quality of life, but also economically. And then the final page is a list of what we think are our near-term activities to the remainder of this year to try to get this off the ground. And then some, we just spitballed some ideas for potential projects, if I can have to look at that and give you some feedback.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Any questions at all or discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. Our thanks to all three. Good luck. The next resolution is renaming two streets in Block C of Barrett subdivision and for other purposes. Chris, this came from CCI slash ACC.
Yes, sir.
Any questions at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into a contract with Traffic and Lighting Systems LLC for the construction of the Dartmoor-Hawk pedestrian crossing and for other purposes. Hawk is an acronym that stands for High Intensity Activated Crosswalk. Again, for those of you that have this map, you can see where there is a red block that says the City of Bella Vista contribution, location for Hawk improvements, and limited 10-foot paved trail. So the Hawk will actually allow those that are crossing Dartmoor to press a button, and a whole bevy of lights will start to flash, which will tell traffic to stop. This has been a labor of love for, what, two years?
At least.
At least. It's a federal grant, which runs through the state, which is challenging at times. However, we got through it, and we went to bid, and Traffic and Lighting Systems, I think they were the only ones who... think they were the only ones who actually bid on it, Chris? And they're the company that we use to maintain our normal traffic lights. Right. Are there any questions at all? Total cost will be about 115,000, including a 10% contingency, and 91,000 of it is federal grant. All right, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Carey, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Mitchell Williams Cellig Gates and Woodyard, P.L.L.C., for water system procurement legal counsel services. As you are aware, we are still in negotiation with Centerton to buy their water spur from the intersection of 279 and 72 that leads into Bella Vista. We have reached a certain point now where it's time for us to get some attorneys who understand water systems involved, and so we did a request for qualifications. We had two companies step forward, of which this is one of them, and they were interviewed. And at the end of it, the panel, which was Mr. Kelly and Councilmember Anderson and the Finance Director Elston, all agreed that Mitchell Williams Cellig Gates and Woodyard are the best solution for us. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Carey, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution. Approving the appointment of Barbara Knotts to complete the unexpired term of Dr. Richard Beck on the City of Bella Vista Public Library Advisory Board. Again, for those of you that may not be familiar, the city does not own the land, nor does it own the building, but it operates the facility itself. And to help us do that, there is an advisory board. Unfortunately, Mr. or Dr. Beck passed away in early July, and the chairman of the board went out and asked for volunteers in the community and has chosen Barbara Knotts, who has a great deal of experience. So is there any discussion?
No discussion. I'd just like to take this opportunity. You know, we don't have an opportunity to talk about the library a lot. We talk about police, fire, roads, comprehensive plans, et cetera, but my wife and I, we had our granddaughter in town a couple weeks ago, and we went out to eat breakfast with her. And my wife, being an ex-principal, she's retired now, she said, "I think, let's take little Ms. Blake to the library. We'll let her look around, maybe check out a couple of books." And fortuitous for us, we showed up at about 10 o'clock on a Friday morning, and they had a story time that was getting ready to begin. And there were probably 30 or 35 children at least. It could have been more than that. And the lady, I don't know who she was, did this little story time, and the children were just enraptured. Then they had a children's craft. They made ice cream cones from colored craft paper. Then they actually had ice cream. They served the kids. And then in addition to that, Blake got to play on a children's computer, which they really need more. They don't have enough because there's about two or three of them, and there's a bunch of kids waiting. They have a Lego wall. So the net of the whole thing is, when we're leaving, about an hour and a half later, my granddaughter stops as we're walking out the door, and she turns around and said, "This is the best library ever," you know? So I walked back in, and Roxy was there, and I called Roxy Wright out, and I said, "Roxy, come here, listen to this for just a second." And I said, "Blake, tell her what you just told me." I think it made Roxy's day, but I just wanted to say thank you to Roxy and her staff and the volunteers. That library, I think, is a hidden gem in Bella Vista, and those people really work hard to make it everything that it can be. And I do know what, they've rebid the building of that with the architect, whatever they've got going on. Hopefully, we can get that library built. I think it could be a tremendous asset to Bella Vista. It already is, but it could even be more of an asset. So I just want to take that time to give them some kudos because they deserve it.
Okay, thanks, Doug. Out of the mouths of babes. Anyone else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Carey, 5-0.
Okay, the next resolution. Amending the 2017 city budget to transfer $8,500 in project savings from Department 100 Capital Projects Account Number 57653 Contracts, miscellaneous, to Department 11 Human Resources Account Number 52820 Supplies Computer Software. And again, for those of you that may not understand what all this means, we have a budget, and it's broken out by department. And if you're going to move money from one department to another, you have to have council approval. You can move the money as a department head inside your own budget, but if you're moving from one department to another, you have to have this. This particular $8,500 is to buy software that will allow us to do an instantaneous comparison to all of northwest Arkansas municipalities, not necessarily by city because it's lumped together. But if we want to create a new position, or we have the budget, for example, coming up very, very soon, and we want to make sure that we have everybody paid properly, this is a much faster way of doing it than going out the old way, calling up all the other communities, or using books that are provided by AML to try and figure out what we should be using. So that's the purpose of the money, and that's the purpose of why we are moving it from one department to another. Are there any questions at all? Okay, seeing none, I would request a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Carey, 5-0.
Thank you. The final resolution of the evening is authorizing the condemnation and acquisition of rights of way and easements on certain real property in the City of Bella Vista for the Lower Suits Us Drive project and for other purposes. This goes back to the earlier one where we were successful in obtaining easements from some of the individuals, but we were not from others, including some, we just don't know where they are. We've tried to contact them through the assessment database at the county, and we haven't had any luck. So, councillor, I'm going to let you take it over at this point.
Well, what you're authorizing here is the exercise of eminent domain for us to obtain the necessary rights of way and easements to finish the project. Whenever we're unable to negotiate with the property owners in good faith, which we always do, in order to obtain the necessary width that we're going to need, or additional width that we're going to need for the drainage part and for the widening of the road, we can't let the project be stopped because we have someone who just won't talk to us, won't agree, or that we can't find. So this permits and gives authorization for me to take the necessary legal steps in circuit court to file suit, to obtain the necessary rights of way, and then if, we certainly want to try to continue to resolve it after that point, all of my experience in doing this has been we've always been able to resolve it. I want to continue to do that with other places. I've done this. But if we're not, then eventually a jury would determine the value of what it is we need to take based on a figure that the law determines is how you calculate just compensation. So that's what this does, and so if we don't do this, we're going to have gaps in a brand-new, pretty road with drainage, and we can't have that. So it's pretty much necessary.
Thank you. Any questions at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All righty. Councilmember Wozniak.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Carey, 5-0.
Thank you. Meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be September the 18th, 5:30, at the City Hall Conference Room. And the next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, September 25th, at 6:30, right here in Legion Hall. The Planning Commission work session will be Thursday, August 31st, 4:30, in the City Hall Conference Room. And the Planning Commission regular meeting will be September the 11th, at 6:30, in the City Hall Conference Room. And the Board of Zoning Adjustment is meeting on September the 19th, at 7:00 p.m. Chris, will that be also at the City Hall Conference Room?
I hope it's at the City Hall Conference Room.
Fair enough. Thank you. I hope you enjoyed this evening. Enjoy your evening. Good night. We are adjourned.